Good afternoon. We're here today for a virtual town hall regarding an officer-involved shooting that occurred on Friday, May 7th, 2020, on Varney Place between Jack London Alley and Third Street in the south-of-market neighborhood of San Francisco. Before proceeding, I'd like to announce to our viewing and listening audience that we have sign language interpretation services here this afternoon to assist persons who are deaf or hard of hearing. This town hall is also being translated into Spanish and Cantonese for members of our community who speak those languages. Today's presentation will include details from an officer-involved shooting incident that resulted in non-life-threatening injuries to Mr. Xavier Pittman Jr. We recognize the traumatic impacts that officer-involved shootings can have on members of our communities, especially for families and loved ones. To any of our viewers experiencing trauma from this incident or from information or images presented during this town hall, please know that help is available to you. You may contact the San Francisco Department of Public Health Crisis Line at 415-970-3800 for trauma services. After our presentation, we will allow one hour for public questions and comments. We estimate that this town hall will end at 5:30 PM. So here's what we'd like to accomplish today. First and foremost, we want to continue to earn your trust and legitimacy by being transparent through this presentation. We will be releasing facts known to us at this time about the incident in a manner that is informative and impartial. In the spirit of transparency, accountability, and just doing what's right, I'm departing from our normal town hall protocols and will make a statement regarding this incident based on what we know at this time from the evidence and facts of this case, including video evidence, witness, and our members' statements. Based on our analysis of the facts and evidence we have at this time, the shooting of Mr. Pittman quite simply should not have happened. I'm deeply sorry that Mr. Pittman was shot during this incident, and I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly apologize to Mr. Pittman, his family, and his friends. I also want to say to the public that I'm truly sorry, as I know and we know, you expect us to get this right, and we know how traumatic it is to see these types of incidents, especially when they should not have happened. Shortly, Commander Robert O'Sullivan will discuss the facts of this case, but before I turn this over to Commander O'Sullivan, I'd like to emphasize that this is an ongoing investigation. As such, there may be some information that we cannot release at this time, either because the facts are not yet clearly established or because the release of certain information is either prohibited by law or could compromise the investigation. Next, unlike most officer-involved shooting town halls in recent years, no body-worn camera footage was captured in this incident. That is because the San Francisco Police Officers involved in this incident were working a plainclothes district station assignment. Current SFPD policies allow body-worn camera exemptions for officers working certain plainclothes operations. This particular operation met the body-worn camera exemption. However, with that said, business surveillance video camera footage in the area and immediate vicinity of the officer-involved shooting captured various portions of this incident. Those videos will be presented during Commander O'Sullivan's presentation shortly. An additional video is being sought by investigators. Although we've been committed to transparency with our officer-involved shooting investigations for several years now, this level of transparency is consistent with California's police transparency law that was implemented with the passage of Senate Bill 1421. All the footage or all the information we will release in this town hall, including video footage and audio recordings, will be posted on the SFPD website at sanfranciscopolices.org, where it will remain available in perpetuity for public inspection. Next, San Francisco Police Department directives mandate that we release the name of the officers from officer-involved shootings within 10 days of the incident unless safety concerns argue against disclosure. In this manner, pardon me, in this matter, no safety concerns have been identified, and the name of the involved officer will be released during Commander Robert O'Sullivan's presentation of the facts of this incident. We've conducted a thorough safety assessment in this case, and we have identified, as I said, no safety concerns. Next, I'd like to explain the investigative processes for an officer-involved shooting. San Francisco has a multi-agency response to officer-involved shootings, and each agency's investigation is independent. When an officer-involved shooting occurs in San Francisco involving an on-duty San Francisco Police Officer, the following agencies are immediately notified: the San Francisco Police Department's Investigative Services Detail and the San Francisco Police Department Internal Affairs Detail; the San Francisco District Attorney's Office Independent Investigations Bureau, also known as IIB, is also notified, as well as the San Francisco Department of Police Accountability, also known as DPA. All notified agencies immediately dispatch investigators and appropriate personnel to the scene to begin their respective and independent investigations. As far as investigative processes related to the OIS, there are five general areas of investigative responsibility. First, SFPD's Investigative Services Detail is the investigative unit responsible for investigating any underlying criminal activity that led up to the officer-involved shooting. In this case, the underlying criminal activity being investigated by SFPD's Investigative Services Detail is a series of auto burglaries that occurred in the city and county of San Francisco involving a gray Mitsubishi. Second, our Internal Affairs Division, SFPD's Internal Affairs Division, is responsible for conducting an administrative investigation to determine if the officer or officers responsible for the OIS are in compliance with the standards and responsibilities of SFPD policy. Although the investigations of both SFPD units run in parallel, each has a distinct investigative purview and focus. Each maintains a strict internal firewall to comply with legal standards and requirements. Third, the San Francisco District Attorney's Office Independent Investigations Bureau, or IIB, is the lead investigative unit responsible for investigating whether the officer or officers involved use deadly force or any associated force, and that that force is legal and in accordance with the criminal laws of the state of California. The District Attorney's investigations and findings are independent of the San Francisco Police Department's investigation and administrative findings. Based on the findings of the District Attorney's Independent Investigations Bureau, or IIB, the District Attorney of the city and county of San Francisco is authorized to determine whether or not the involved officer or officers have violated criminal laws, and accordingly, whether or not to file criminal charges against the officer or officers. The fourth independent investigative process is the San Francisco Department of Police Accountability, also known as DPA. San Francisco voters created DPA as a successor to the Office of Citizen Complaints with their passage of Proposition D in June 2016 in the June 2016 election. DPA investigates all SFPD incidents in which any of our officers discharge a weapon within the course and scope of their duties whenever that discharge results in an individual's injury or death. The fifth and final independent investigative process is that of the San Francisco Office of the Chief Medical Examiner, or OCME. The medical examiner has responsibility for conducting an on-scene investigation, collecting evidence, and taking custody of a deceased person in any officer-involved shooting that results in a fatality. In tragic cases that result in fatalities, the OCME is responsible for conducting an autopsy to determine the decedent's cause of death and to report those findings publicly. Thankfully, no fatality resulted from last Friday's officer-involved shooting on Varney Place. Accordingly, the San Francisco Medical Examiner has no investigative role in this incident. As I said, we will allocate one hour for public comments and questions and conclude this town hall at approximately 5:45 PM. And before we move on to Commander O'Sullivan, I just want to reiterate, I am truly sorry to Mr. Pittman and his family, his friends, and the people of San Francisco that this incident occurred. I will return after Commander O'Sullivan's presentation for some final comments before we open it up for questions. Thanks again for joining us and tuning in.
The officer-involved shooting incident that occurred on May 7th, 2021, at Varney Place and Jack London Alley was preceded by six separate incidents. The incidents consist of the following: five auto burglaries, which occurred from approximately 11:44 AM to 12:45 PM in the Richmond and Central Police Districts of San Francisco; and one instance during which the suspect vehicle fled from a neighboring police agency during a traffic stop attempt. The officer-involved shooting incident discussed in this presentation involves plainclothes members of the San Francisco Police Department assigned to the Central Police District. The plainclothes officers were conducting an auto burglary surveillance and arrest operation when the officer-involved shooting occurred. The precise chronology of these incidents is currently under investigation. The times presented are approximate. The following is a summary of the events as they are understood as of today, Thursday, May 13th, 2021. At approximately 11:44 AM, witnesses observed an auto burglary near the Japanese Tea Garden. This location is within Golden Gate Park in the Richmond Police District of San Francisco. The suspect vehicle was described by witnesses as a silver Mitsubishi Eclipse Cross. A license plate was provided and later deemed to be stolen. The suspects were observed breaking a vehicle window, stealing bags from the vehicle, and fleeing the scene in the Mitsubishi. At approximately 12:04 PM, the US Park Police observed the same silver Mitsubishi in the Presidio area of San Francisco. US Park Police officers attempted to make a traffic stop of the vehicle. However, the vehicle accelerated at a high rate of speed, drove over a median into oncoming traffic, and fled the area driving the wrong way. US Park Police subsequently called Central Police Station and notified the central plainclothes officers of the traffic stop attempt and the evasive maneuvers by the suspect's vehicle driver. At approximately 12:10 PM, a witness observed an auto burglary at Leavenworth and Jefferson Streets in the Central Police District. The witness in this incident heard glass break and observed a suspect enter a vehicle window and retrieve a purse and a bag. The suspect then entered a silver Mitsubishi which left the area. The vehicle had the same license plate as the vehicle described in the Golden Gate Park auto burglary. At approximately 12:20 PM, an auto burglary occurred at Pier 35 in the Central Police District. A witness described observing the occupant of a silver Mitsubishi enter a vehicle and steal luggage before fleeing in the vehicle. A witness flagged down a passing University of California Police Department officer who later reported this information to the SFPD. At approximately 12:31 PM, the Department of Emergency Management broadcast information about a silver Mitsubishi with the same license plate number as those previously reported casing vehicles in the area of Pier 35. Casing is a term commonly used to describe suspicious behavior of suspects loitering near vehicles for the purpose of committing auto burglary. As a result of this broadcast and their knowledge of prior incidents, plainclothes officers from Central Station began searching the Embarcadero area for the silver Mitsubishi. At approximately 12:35 PM, two plainclothes officers observed the vehicle driving southbound on Embarcadero approaching Washington Street. The officers conducted mobile surveillance of the vehicle and its occupants to observe their actions. The officers observed the occupants of the Mitsubishi case a parked vehicle near Washington and Drum Streets. The officers momentarily lost sight of the suspects and then saw them remove bags and items from the parked vehicle. The suspects got back into the silver Mitsubishi, which then drove away from the area. At approximately 12:40 PM, plainclothes officers resumed their observation of the Mitsubishi and its occupants. The vehicle continued southbound on the Embarcadero and was seen double-parked near an Audi which was parked on the street. The officers briefly lost sight of the Mitsubishi as it parked near the Audi. The officers then drove by shortly after and observed that the Audi had been burglarized near where the Mitsubishi had been double-parked. Plainclothes officers once again began searching the area to locate the silver Mitsubishi. At approximately 12:48 PM, two plainclothes officers, while searching the area of Jack London Alley and Varney Place, observed the vehicle. The Mitsubishi was pulled to the side of the alley against a building, and two vehicle occupants were out of the vehicle. The two suspects were observed removing bags, luggage, and other items from the vehicle. The suspects appeared to be searching and emptying the bags and luggage onto the ground. The plainclothes officers exited their vehicle and began observing the actions of the suspects from the corner of Jack London Alley and Varney Place. One of the suspects, later identified as Xavier Pittman Jr., was seen wearing a black ski mask, gray sweatshirt, black t-shirt, blue pants, and black shoes. The plainclothes officers ran towards Mr. Pittman with their firearms drawn to place him under arrest. A surveillance video shows plainclothes Officer Number 1 grabbed Mr. Pittman, and both fell to the ground. During the physical contact with Mr. Pittman, an officer-involved shooting occurred, which resulted in one round striking Mr. Pittman in his left wrist area. The audio portion of a video recording recovered from the scene captured one of the officers' yelled "Police!" immediately followed by a single gunshot. Mr. Pittman can be heard on the audio saying that he had been shot and requesting an ambulance. The silver Mitsubishi accelerated away at a high rate of speed with the rear hatchback still open. The suspect vehicle then collided with a stopped and occupied vehicle as it proceeded west on Varney Place. The suspect vehicle was last seen on video fleeing northbound on Third Street. An officer broadcast a request for an ambulance and additional resources to the scene. Officers rendered medical aid to Mr. Pittman. Subsequently, an ambulance arrived and transported Mr. Pittman to a local hospital. Mr. Pittman was treated for non-life-threatening injuries at a local hospital. Based upon information known at this time, Mr. Pittman was not in possession of a weapon at the time of the incident. Preliminary evidence indicates that one officer fired one round from his department-issued firearm. The second officer on the scene did not fire his department-issued firearm. A large amount of stolen property related to the auto burglaries was recovered at the scene. The Mitsubishi was later found unoccupied and recovered in Oakland, California. The plainclothes officers involved in this incident were not wearing body-worn cameras, often referred to as BWCs. Current San Francisco Police Department policies allow BWC exemptions for officers working certain plainclothes assignments. This particular operation met the BWC exemptions. Nearby businesses provided surveillance video of various portions of this incident. Additional video is still being sought by investigators. Witnesses to the officer-involved shooting incident have been interviewed, and additional witnesses are being sought by investigators. Witnesses have been interviewed related to the auto burglary incidents which, as described, occurred prior to the officer-involved shooting. As mentioned, the subject involved in this officer-involved shooting is Xavier Pittman Jr. with the date of birth of January 26, 1998. Mr. Pittman was arrested by the San Francisco Police Department and booked at the San Francisco County Jail for the following charges: 459 (second degree) of the California Penal Code (auto burglary, a felony, five counts); 182 (A) (1) of the California Penal Code (conspiracy, a felony, five counts); 496 (A) of the California Penal Code (possession of stolen property, a felony, one count); and finally, 12022.1 of the California Vehicle Code (or Penal Code, excuse me), committing a felony while on release, one count. The officer involved in this officer-involved shooting is Officer Zachary McCullough. The Independent Investigations Bureau of the San Francisco District Attorney's Office and the SFPD Investigative Services Detail are conducting an investigation into this incident. The Department of Police Accountability is conducting an independent administrative investigation. The SFPD Internal Affairs Division is conducting an administrative investigation. Today's presentation is provided in a multimedia format. In an effort to provide a transparent and comprehensive perspective of this incident, the SFPD will provide 911 calls, police dispatch audio, surveillance video, still photos, crime scene investigation photos, maps, and related visual aids. Our presentation today consists of relevant known video and audio at this time, but is not intended to provide all photos, videos, or testimonial information related to this investigation. I will now provide a chronological presentation of this incident using these multimedia resources. The majority of the videos shown are in their unedited form and are shown as provided to SFPD. At select points, to increase transparency for viewers, the video has been enhanced to allow for a better perspective of this incident. Please note that this presentation, the enhanced video, and the unedited video will all be available on the SFPD website immediately following this town hall event. Prior to the beginning of each segment of audio or video, I will provide a brief description to orient the viewer to the time, place, and location of the content about to be shown. Please be advised that personal identifying information such as names, license plates, and phone numbers have been redacted for the privacy of 911 callers and victims. This redaction will be apparent on the audio transmissions as a momentary beep to cover the personal identifying information. You're about to see relevant video footage and learn about other evidence related to this case, so you can have a better understanding of what occurred based upon what we know right now. We are still in the very early stages of an investigation that can take months to complete, and our understanding of this incident may change as additional evidence is collected and reviewed. We do not draw any conclusion as to whether the officers acted consistent with our policies and the law until all the facts are known and the investigation is complete. A word of caution: the images and information you are about to see and hear may be disturbing. When a police officer uses force to arrest a suspect or defend against attack, the images are graphic and may be difficult to watch. In addition, there may be strong language used in some of the videos. Viewer discretion is advised, especially for young and sensitive viewers. We encourage those in need of help to contact the San Francisco Department of Public Health Crisis Line at area code 415-970-3800. This series of incidents included 911 calls as well as the dispatch calls for service over police radio. This audio was provided to the San Francisco Police Department from the San Francisco Department of Emergency Management. DEM provides dispatch services for the Fire and Police Departments in San Francisco. I will now place 12 separate audio clips, which consist of 911 calls and police radio transmissions related to this incident. Please be advised that you will hear reference to the police radio code 852 several times throughout the following radio transmissions. 852 is SFPD radio code for an auto burglary or car break-in, and is used by officers and dispatchers during radio communication. The first audio clip is a 911 caller reporting an auto burglary by the Japanese Tea Garden in Golden Gate Park.
San Francisco 911, Bar Medical. Hello?
Yes, what was it?
San Francisco 911.
It was a smash and grab on the car.
Where?
Did you get the license plate? In Golden Gate Park. Hang on a second.
Did it just happen?
Sorry, yeah, the whole group of us thought. The license plate of the car that took the stuff was [bleep]. And it's a, what can you tell what it is? Silver Eclipse.
Can you give me genetics on the license plate? A K like King, B like Boy, B like Boy?
Okay, sure. Yeah, the Bs were, uh, Boys, Boys. Can you say it again? Show it again?
I have it, I just need to make sure that I copy it correctly.
Okay. So, again, it's [bleep].
Any weapons?
Uh, didn't see any weapons. They had something to smash the window. They were all in black.
How many people?
How many were there? Were there three? Huh? Three or four. And you've got, this guy, this bicyclist has a picture. Looks like one was in a gray hoodie with black pants with white stripes on it.
Gray hoodie, black pants with stripes.
Yeah, and a back, a black, a black, um, head covering, balaclava.
All right, now listen, I have, I have an officer on the way, but I need to confirm your location. You're on Martha Luther King Drive?
Is this Martha Luther King Drive? Right across from the big botanical gardens, up, uh, yeah, just north of the Japanese gardens. On the right side.
Of the Japanese Tea Garden. Okay, listen, I have officers on the way. Which way did the car go?
I'm sorry? Oh, it went, uh, the car went west.
On Martha Luther King Drive?
Yeah.
And the vehicle that they broke into, can you give me a description?
Sure. It's a [bleep], and their license plate is [bleep].
And what color is it?
It's black. And they broke in the back window.
So I see that you are near, um, the water. There's like a little lake there? Are you on the side of the lake or on the other side?
Oh, I don't know where, is there a lake near here? Or on the road?
Yeah, so I think that Parallel Street is, uh, St. Lake Drive. I just wanted to make sure that you are on the Martha Luther King side.
Yeah, yes. If you have a number that, uh, the bicyclist can text you the photo.
Unfortunately, I don't have cases ready for text just yet, but if you gave it with the plate, it's gonna be more than enough, and we can have a name and number if we need to get the picture, then they can call him. Otherwise, what the plate that you gave me would be enough. I have an officer on the way right now, and we are broadcasting the information for all. I have an officer on the way right now, and we are broadcasting the information for officers in the area. Did you happen to see the race of the subject or no?
Uh, no, didn't, I didn't see the race.
Any age at all, how old they might have been?
Uh, age, uh, no.
Okay.
I mean, they were very fit. Good, oh, hang on a second, he's looking. Do you have, do you have your, your name and number that she can, uh, she can take down? She sees one of them. Not very tall. Maybe? Yeah. Well, I can't tell the race.
That's okay.
But not very tall, the height, the height of the car, so not very tall. Little five-something. Uh, man, she's looking nice at you. Um, yeah, so what's, what's your name?
My name is [bleep].
And your phone number? Correct.
Okay. Okay. And how about your name, sir?
Okay, my name is [bleep].
Okay. And your callback number? And you also saw it?
Yes.
Okay. Now, my last question, what did they take from the victim vehicle?
Uh, what did they take from the victim's vehicle? Could you tell? I couldn't, what, what did they take? Could you tell? I couldn't tell. They grabbed, they knocked in the back window and the side windows, so I think probably whatever they saw. But it was amazing, they, they just pulled up their car, smashed, grabbed, and, and left.
Okay. Thank you so much for calling, I just wanna confirm if the silver Eclipse plate [bleep].
Yep.
Thank you so much for calling, sir, we're on the way, we're in the area, first checking to see if we find the vehicle, and we'll become, we'll be looking for the victim's vehicle.
All right. Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
You're welcome. Yep, bye.
Three audio clips related to auto burglaries near Leavenworth and Jefferson Streets. The first is a nine-one-one call reporting an auto burglary, and the second two clips are dispatch transmissions.
San Francisco nine-one-one, what station, application, emergency?
Hi there, I just, uh, saw a robbery happen. Do I report that via you?
Uh, so why don't you tell me exactly what happened?
I'm sitting in my car in, um, near, in, around Fishman's Wolf Park in San Francisco, and I was just sitting in my car on my phone, and I heard, um, a car glass break, and I looked up, and I saw this car parked next, double parked next to a [bleep]. The guy ran and, uh, broke the glass, reached his body all the way in, grabbed a purse from inside the car.
Where, where was this exactly?
Let me look up where I am.
Okay. What's your phone number while you get that? And just, yeah, go ahead and give me the location of where it happened.
Yeah, I'm currently on Leavenworth Street, about midway between Jefferson and Beach Street.
Hold on, let me see here. Give me the location one more time.
On Leavenworth Street?
Hmm.
Between, um, let's see. Um, sorry, I have to, I have to move, I was just sitting, uh, to leave the state where I was double parked, um, I was, I was between Beach Street and Jefferson Street, about midway on the street.
And then how long ago is this?
Minutes, maybe two minutes ago.
Okay, hold on. One second here, I'm just gonna get the officers there right now. Um, okay, and then the, were they in a vehicle, the one that broke in?
Yeah, and I took a couple pictures of the vehicle.
Okay, what's, uh, the vehicle?
Um, sorry, if you don't mind just giving me a moment, I need to find a place that I can stop, that I'm not...
Do you remember from, from your memory, um, like the, like what color it was?
Um, yeah, it was a silver SUV, I don't know...
Okay. Is that right? And then you might have the license plate, right?
I have the license plate, that's right.
Okay, okay, once, and then which way did it go?
It went straight down the street, and then, um, there were two other, like, guys on the street who, um, watched, saw it happen too.
Okay, but...
And they told me to call the cops, that I wasn't, I didn't pay attention to which way they turned after that.
So what, did they go down Leavenworth?
Yeah, they were, they were, it was on Leavenworth towards the water.
Okay, so they, they headed, they headed towards the water? Okay.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, one second. Ah, ah, what's going on? And then the, the vehicle they broke into, what color was it?
It was a [bleep]. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And I have that, I have that, um...
Okay.
Uh, what's my call it?
Do you see the officer?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you see the officer? I just sent them to Leavenworth and Jefferson, they said they came on scene just right now.
Um, I'm, I'm turning back onto that street right now, I have to get a, go around the block to the FedEx, our UCF truck was beeping at me to leave.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, but I'll be back there in just a moment.
Okay, all right. Uh, what kind of car are you in?
I'm in a [bleep].
I'm just gonna let them know you're coming back.
Um, I don't, with officers.
You don't see the officer?
I don't know.
Okay, are you, are you on Leavenworth, between Jefferson and Beach?
Yeah, I just stopped back there and I don't see them, I'm gonna turn around and, and park.
Okay, or just stay there to give us your hazard lights on.
Yeah, the, um, the...
Hold on, I'm letting them know right now. Sorry, I sent it over right away, that's why, and I think they were nearby, so they got there pretty quick. Um...
That's okay, I, yeah, I don't, I don't see them though, which is kind of odd, um...
What's your name?
It's not...
Oh, they're one block away.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm just, right now, but I'll be here when they get there.
Okay, so you're, you're still on Leavenworth, right, between Beach and Jefferson?
That's exactly right.
Okay, all right, have your hazard lights on, and flag them down when they get there. Uh, let's see here.
Okay.
Do you, did you remember who broke into the vehicle? Do you use, like, you know, race, they were, white, black, black, under age?
I couldn't tell, because they were wearing a full face mask, which, you know, in this time means nothing to everybody.
How, how tall was, was it a male or a female?
It was definitely a man, pretty skinny, tall man, I would say, like, definitely older.
How tall?
I would say probably between six, sixty and six-four, I was, I was just saying in my thoughts, I couldn't tell exactly, but...
What color jacket was he wearing?
Not, not... He was wearing all black.
All black, okay, what did he use to break into the, the vehicle?
I, honestly, I, I only saw them, like, right after it was already broken, it, for like, a hot second, it seems like he used his elbow, but that doesn't even make sense, right? Like, you can't use your elbow to break into a car, but like, it seemed like they were, like, ready, that they were, you know, had prepared to do all of that.
Okay. What's your name? Hello?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, well, sorry, what is your name?
Sorry, I accidentally muted myself, uh, and there's a police driver coming up now, uh, or the police officer, is, my, my full first name is [bleep].
All right, okay, I'll let them know, you see the officer?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, flag them down.
Yeah, he's, they're right in front of me now, should I hang up and talk to them?
Yeah, talk to them, talk to them, no, just talk to them. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Central two, central three, eight-four, eight-five-two, Leavenworth and Jefferson.
Adam thirteen Charles, copy. Two ago, between Jefferson and Beach, eight-five-two suspect vehicle, silver SUV.
They're trying to get plate info, he has photos. Last seen, uh, going towards the water.
Adam thirteen Charles, nine-four.
Nine-four. Victim vehicle is a [bleep].
Adam thirteen Charles with updated suspect description.
Go ahead.
It's gonna be a Mitsubishi SUV with a license plate of [bleep].
It's white. A silver in color.
Hey, firm, uh, silver in color SUV.
Clips are related to Pier thirty-five. They consist of one nine-one-one call and three police radio transmissions.
If only central four, eight-five-two, K-35, they're in a gray Mitsubishi Eclipse Cross [bleep]. Last seen southbound on the Embarcadero, info only.
This is Adam thirteen Charles' vehicle, and that plate [bleep]. So the plate has been switched. Of course, it's three, Adam, four, Adam. Can you go to, uh, the area of Pier thirty-five and look for this, uh, eight-five-two suspect vehicle that's for the thirteen Charles' run?
Ten-four, ninety-eight.
It's gonna be a silver Mitsubishi SUV, the plate on it is [bleep]. Eight-five-two, over there, it's Leavenworth and Jefferson, and now just seen by a nine-oh-nine at Pier thirty-five area.
If only central four, eight-five-two, K-35, they're in a gray Mitsubishi Eclipse Cross [bleep]. Last seen southbound on the Embarcadero, info only.
San Francisco nine-one-one, what's the exact location of your emergency?
Uh, yeah, no, I'm right in front of Pier thirty-five.
Okay, what's the emergency?
Uh, there was a group of dudes just looking in cars and driving around, checking every car, and, uh, yeah. They were cussing at some dudes that noticed that they were looking in their own car, so they came after them, and they started, uh, cussing back, and they drove off. It was like four guys, dressed in black, and they had black masks on, and, yeah. I have a picture of their license plate on their car.
Hold on.
So if you can, wanna run that.
So they were all in one car?
Yeah, they were on one car.
What kind of car was it?
I think it was a Pontiac, let me check.
What color?
I have the plate, son, and you can run the plate.
Yes, I'll take that in a minute, what color is the vehicle?
Uh, hold on. So it's a Mitsubishi, it's a gray one.
Gray Mitsubishi.
And it's an Eclipse Cross.
Eclipse Cross, you said?
Yeah, Eclipse Cross.
And what's the license plate, please?
Uh, the license plate is [bleep]. Yeah, I have the picture, I'm looking at it.
Did you see any, um, weapons on these people?
No, I didn't see their lungs or anything, but, yeah, they're, they're super blatant, obvious, what they're doing.
And were you able to see what race they were?
Yeah, uh, the dude that I saw, well, the dude that got out of the car, he was black.
Okay, you only saw one guy as black, the others you didn't know?
The, the car looked full, there was four people in it, just one dude would get off.
Okay.
But they were all wearing like the same kind of getup, they had their hoods on, they had masks on, and, and then, yeah, just one dude was looking through all the cars.
Okay. Did you wanna leave your name and number?
Yeah, my name [bleep].
And I just want to confirm the location is in front of Pier thirty-five?
Yeah, there's a parking lot, that's in front there, a public parking lot.
Okay. All right, thank you, did you wanna meet with officers, or are you okay?
No, I'm okay, um, I'm not from here anyway.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much for calling in, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Do you know, oh, by the way, do you know what direction they headed off to?
Um, so they went, if you put cardinal, I'm not very good with the cardinal here, I think...
Um, are they going...
They went away from Pier thirty-nine. They went towards, like, the lower number.
Oh, the other side, towards the number?
Yeah, yeah, they're on Embarcadero.
On Embarcadero, but heading southbound on Embarcadero, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
The next two audio clips consist of police radio transmissions related to auto burglaries at Washington and Drum Streets and Washington and the Embarcadero.
Out of forty-six.
Three, out of forty-six.
Can you get a plate and set cap, please?
Go ahead with the description and then the plate.
Copy, I'm gonna be at, uh, Washington and Drum, it's gonna be, uh, Mazda SUV, uh, Ford or, it was like a dark blue in color, it's gonna be [bleep]. Choose that the, uh, the model number's gonna be CX five.
I feel like I saw this somewhere, standby.
Out of forty-six.
Friday, May seven, two thousand twenty-one, thirteen, thirty-one, and thirty-six.
Go ahead.
Okay, I think I have a second, uh, victim, it's gonna be on the Embarcadero, just across from the ferry building, it's on the, uh, south side of Embarcadero, it's gonna be a white Audi Q5, you ready for the cap plate?
Is that in the parking lot?
Uh, negative, it's actually right by the Justin Herbert Plaza, I guess, it's, uh, parked on the street.
Go with the plate.
Cap plate.
Victim makes eight-two vehicle, copy.
Hey, [bleep], can you give me a call? Copy.
The final two audio clips consist of radio transmissions made by SFPD officers after the officer-involved shooting.
Three, Adam thirty-seven, code thirty-three on, uh, two.
Adam thirty-seven, go ahead with your twenty...
Oh, we're gonna need a, uh, it's that silver Mitsubishi eight-five-two vehicle just fled of Varney towards, I think, Third, and we need a four-oh-eight.
Adam thirty-seven, copy, Varney at Third.
Three, I'm thirty-seven, uh, four-oh-eight, code three, uh, there's a, uh, suspect here, he's, uh, got some uncontrolled bleeding from his wrist. Varney and, uh, Varney and, uh, South Park, Jack London, Varney and Jack London.
Varney and Jack London, copy. Adam thirty-seven, do you have direction of travel?
No, it fled, uh, it fled on Varney towards, uh, Fourth.
Copy, on Varney towards Fourth.
Yeah, we need a code three, turn it get applied.
Ten-four, somebody code three, do you?
Eight-two-one, give us the unit. Three, I'm thirty-seven. Boy twelve, Adam, eight.
Copy, boy twelve, Adam.
Vehicle deflected.
It's a gray Mitsubishi, silver in color SUV.
On Varney towards Fourth. Two-oh-one, I think you just broadcast a, uh, car on and off getting on the freeway.
Yeah, ten-four, last direction of travel, or last call we got was, it got on the freeway, Adam thirty-seven is saying on Varney towards Fourth.
And, uh, we're gonna need a, uh, one-hundred unit here. And, uh, if you could, uh, if we could have units to block off some traffic, please, here at, uh, Varney and, uh, Jack London, please, both ends of, of Varney.
Copy, both ends of Varney, you should be one...
Boy fifteen, Adam, for that.
Boy fifteen, Adam, copy.
Sorry, Charlie, ninety-eight. Two-oh-one and one-oh-five, we're ninety-eight.
Two-oh-one and the one-oh-five, copy.
Yeah, Adam one-five Charlie, I'm two, we're ninety-eight, that's well.
Adam one-five Charlie, copy.
And, uh, that's why, uh, it's gonna be a, uh, GSW, just the hand.
Copy.
Way thirty-eight, Adam thirty-seven. Is this gonna be a DuBacar? Uh, yes.
Copy, dispatch, can you put that up for CHP, that vehicle might be going toward [bleep] area.
Copy.
Dispatch, I have a four-oh-eight come up, Jack London from, uh, Bryant.
Copy.
Excuse me, Jack London from, uh, Brandon.
Jack London from Brandon, copy.
Yeah, boy two-oh-one, ninety-seven, taking command, it's gonna be an OIS.
Copy.
Yeah, boy two oh one, ninety-seven, taking command. It's gonna be an OIS.
Copy.
Four oh eight rolling.
Hey firm, it's coming code three to you guys.
The best approach is probably gonna be off of Bryant. John, two oh one, the boy two oh one.
What?
Yeah, send it from the unit over to help give you guys a hand.
I will now play videos related to the officer-involved shooting. The first surveillance video was obtained from a stationary surveillance camera. The camera is fixed on the east side of Jack London Alley facing south towards Brandon Street. The T intersection on the right side of the screen is Varney Place. This is a fixed, video-only surveillance camera that does not record audio. I will now play the same video enhanced at certain points to identify the participants, equipment, and location. Next is video from a fixed video-only camera located on the north wall of Varney Place facing east. The suspect vehicle will come into view and park near the wall on the right side of your screen. I will now play the same video enhanced at certain points to identify the participants, equipment, and location. The next video is from a fixed camera on the north wall of Varney Place. This video captures audio of the officer-involved shooting incident and shows the suspect vehicle fleeing westbound on Varney Place. A hit-and-run vehicle collision occurred as the suspect vehicle fled. I will now play the same video which is enhanced at select points. The next video is from a camera on Varney Place pointed towards northbound Third Street. The Mitsubishi is seen fleeing with the rear hatch open, turning north onto Third Street. I will now replay the video which again has been enhanced at certain points. Our next video is from a fixed surveillance camera showing the suspect vehicle fleeing onto northbound Third Street. The next video is the last video. It has been enhanced at certain points. I will now display three photographs taken by the Crime Scene Investigations Unit during an after-scene processing, and one map charting the locations of the incidents discussed in this presentation. This is a perspective photo of the scene from the east side looking west. The second photo is a photo of the, uh, victim vehicle in the hit-and-run that occurred as the suspect vehicle fled west on Varney Place. The third and final photograph is a photograph of Officer McCullough's department-issued firearm. This map, as shown throughout the presentation, marks the seven incidents that have been discussed in this presentation. My presentation is complete. We will now hear some additional remarks from Chief Scott.
Thank you, Commander O'Sullivan. To the public, I'd like to point out that we take feedback very seriously. Based on feedback from prior officer-involved shooting town halls, we will also take questions and answer, and answer them to the extent we're able to, understanding that this incident remains an ongoing investigation. We've already received questions from members of the media asking if this shooting was unintentional or negligent discharge. It is too early in the investigation to make a determination, but as I said earlier, this should never have happened. I will address, however, some of the questions now so we can use the time we have for other questions. As I said in my opening remarks, although this investigation has not reached a final conclusion, I can say that based on what we know, at this time, the evidence conclusion, I can say that based on what we know at this time, the evidence and the facts of this case, including the video evidence that you saw, witnesses in our member statements that the shooting of Mr. Pittman quite simply should not have happened. And I want to say again to Mr. Pittman and his family and friends that I'm deeply sorry that Mr. Pittman was shot during this incident. Beyond the apology that I've expressed, Officer McAuliffe, through his attorney, has asked that we post his own apology to Mr. Pittman for this incident as a part of the online content that is part of this officer-involved shooting town hall. The full text of Officer McAuliffe's statement will be available on our website at sanfranciscopolices.org. But to summarize, Officer McAuliffe asked me to convey through his attorney how badly he feels that this happened. He did not intend for his gun to go off, and he sincerely apologizes to Mr. Pittman and wishes Mr. Pittman a full and speedy recovery. As to the question of whether or not this officer-involved shooting was unintentional, that is a part of a legal determination to be made by the San Francisco City and County District Attorney and their independent criminal investigation. Administratively, our Department General Order 8.11 defines any discharge of an officer's firearm that results in injury or death as an officer-involved shooting. What that means is the shooting, whether unintentional or not, is adjudicated administratively through the lens and standards of our Use of Force Policy, General Order 5.01. That standard classifies the use of a firearm as a deadly force, a use of deadly force which can only be used as a last resort when reasonable alternatives have been exhausted or not feasible to protect the public and police officers. In summary, an officer is authorized to use deadly force when the officer has reasonable cause to believe that he or she or another person is in immediate danger of death or serious bodily injury. I'd like to reiterate that during the investigation of an officer-involved shooting and at the investigation's conclusion, we look at the facts and evidence through the lens of standards set by our Use of Force Policy and from the lens of our training guidelines to reach an administrative conclusion. Those standards are purposefully set very high, and our Use of Force Policy is considered by many to be a model policy. At this point in the investigation, we are focused administratively on looking at this case through the lens of our Use of Force General Order 5.01, as I mentioned, our Use of Firearms General Order 5.02, Investigation of Officer-Involved Shootings and Discharges, General Order 8.11, as well as our Arrest and Control Manual in regard to the physical control tactics and the physical arrest of Mr. Pittman. For any persons that are following this case and would like to compare the facts as we know them today to our Use of Force General Order, as well as our other general orders, all of our general orders can be found on our website, again, at www.sanfranciscopolices.org. Now, I'd like to say a few words to our SFPD officers. I, the command staff and the public, expect a lot from you, sometimes even perfection. As your chief, I realize just how difficult your job is, especially during these times in policing. Our city has been plagued the last several years with car break-ins. The work that was being performed to address our car break-in issue prior to this officer-involved shooting was exactly what I and the public expect you to do. While I and this department sincerely apologize to Mr. Pittman for this officer-involved shooting, we, the San Francisco Police Department and all of its members, owe it to the public and ourselves as committed professionals to our profession to continue to prevent, detect, and solve car break-ins and all crime in our city, and vigorously pursue and hold accountable those who victimized residents and visitors in our great city. To the SFPD officers, we still have a job to do. Please keep your heads up and your spirits up and continue to do the great job that you do day in and day out. Lastly, before we take the public's questions, I'd like to update you on what steps we've taken to revisit our policies and training to prevent a recurrence of this type of incident. First, until further notice, I have directed all district station planeclothes to continue their investigations but not conduct operations in planeclothes until we review and revise, where necessary, our training, policies, and protocols regarding district station planeclothes operations. Next, I have directed our Written Directives Unit to revisit our BWC policy and make policy recommendations for police commission consideration as it pertains to planeclothes operations. Next, I have directed the Deputy Chief of our Administration Bureau to have our Training Division Subject Matter Experts immediately create roll call training and refresher updates for arrest and control tactics with an emphasis on SFPD standards and expectations of its members in regard to physical control holes. All sworn members will receive this refresher training once it's developed. And lastly, I've directed our concerned command staff members to expedite policy recommendations for our planeclothes units at the district station level for police commission consideration. And on that note, our Assistant Chief, Michael Redman, met with all the captains of all ten district stations and their planeclothes sergeants and explained these steps to them and why we are doing what we are doing. And I need to let the public know that our command staff, the district station captains, the planeclothes supervisors are on board, and they understand that we need to be at our best when we protect and serve this city, and they are on board with these changes and the steps that I have taken. Now, we will take questions from the public.
The public comment portion of this town hall will now begin. The length of time for public comment will be one hour. To call into the meeting, please call 1-669-900-6833. Again, that's 1-669-900-6833. Please enter meeting code 848-4423-3181. Enter passcode 773-772. You may also participate in public comment via Zoom by clicking the link in the description below the video presentation. Each public comment caller will have up to two minutes to speak. If you wish to join the queue for public comment, please listen carefully to the following instructions. Interpretation is available in both Spanish and Cantonese. If you are watching on Zoom, you may click the interpretation button and select your preferred language. This is available on web and on the Zoom mobile app. If you are watching on Zoom, you may request to speak by using the raise hand function under reactions. You will be prompted to unmute yourself when it is your turn to speak. When you are done speaking, please re-mute yourself. If you are calling into the meeting, again, please call 1-669-900-6833. Enter meeting code 848-4423-3181. Then enter passcode 773-772. You may press star nine to raise your hand and get in the queue to speak for public comment. You will be prompted when to unmute yourself when it is your turn to speak. You may unmute yourself by pressing star six. When you are done speaking, please re-mute yourself. Once again, each caller will have up to two minutes to provide public comment for this town hall meeting. Your two minutes will begin once you unmute yourself and begin speaking. Moderators, at this time, I'd ask that you please invite the first caller in to speak.
We have not gotten any questions yet via the chat nor via raised hands. For those in the Zoom meeting, you can find the raised hand option in your options bar under reactions. Please click reactions and click the raised hand button. Once you do so, we will call on you and ask you to unmute yourself.
At this time, we have zero callers, and I will reread the instructions. To call into the meeting, please call 1-669-900-6833. Enter meeting code 848-4423-3181. Enter passcode 773-772. You may also participate in public comment via Zoom by clicking the link in the description below the video presentation.
For those callers who have just joined, if you would like to raise your hand, if you are calling in, please press star nine. If you are joining via Zoom, please use the... Okay, we've got one raised hand from a caller. You'll be asked to unmute yourself. Hello, you're unmuted. If you have a question, please ask now.
Hello, is that me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I noticed that Chief Scott apologized to the victim who was shot, but he apologized to the officer who was put in that position, who did not know whether his life was in danger or not. That is my question.
Your question, your dog is barking in the background, so can you... I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
Can I ask my question now?
It appears that caller disconnected, however, we have another raised hand. It appears that caller disconnected, however, we have another raised hand.
Hello? Hi, this is Xavier Pittman's mother.
It appears that caller disconnected, however, we have another raised hand.
When can I speak?
Hello?
Hello, this is Xavier Pittman's mother.
Hi, this is Xavier Pittman's mother.
It appears that caller disconnected, however, we have another raised hand.
Can I speak?
When can I speak? Hello? Hello, this is Xavier Pittman's mother. Hi, this is Xavier Pittman's mother.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can I?
We can hear you, but it sounds like you're standing next to a broadcast and it's catching feedback.
Oh, okay, so I'm calling. First of all, I would like to thank the chief for his excellent broadcast today.
We can hear you, but it sounds like you're standing next to a broadcast and it's catching feedback.
Oh, okay, so I'm calling. First of all, I would like to thank the chief for his excellent broadcast today. I also would like to say that my son was shot in his wrist, which shattered his wrist. He has pins and rods in his wrist. He was also hit in his main artery.
I also would like to say that my son was shot in his wrist, which shattered his wrist. He has pins and rods in his wrist. He was also hit in his main artery.
He also was took into custody. After he was already obtained and detained by the officer.
He also was took into custody.
We have no evidence that my son even exited this vehicle due to the fact that your officers were on standby on the site of the buildings. So my son actually appeared at court today for this matter, and all cases were dropped. So basically, my son is disabled for the rest of his life due to your officer accidentally shooting his gun. Discharging his firearm. This kid is 23 years old and will never be able to work for the rest of his life. Due to your officer accidentally discharging his firearm. On a car burglary suspect, when does that ever go on?
I'm going to try to address your question the best that I can. As you know, I stated in the presentation, we have not adjudicated this case yet, and you know, the reason that I apologize to you and your family and your son was because, you know, we believe at this point in the investigation that it shouldn't have happened. So yes, you're absolutely right, it shouldn't have happened. We still have some investigation to do, and I thank you so much for calling in because it gives me an opportunity to say this to you, that I'm truly sorry for what happened to your son. And as far as the criminal justice system, the case and the evidence will go its course through the criminal justice system in terms of the car burglaries, and you know, we'll see where that lands, but in terms of the officer-involved shooting, which is the reason we're here today, I just want you to know that, you know, it should not have happened, and we are sorry.
We have another raised hand.
The broadcast while you're making your comment so that we can hear you clearly.
Yes, I'm curious how after reported of a six, seven incidents where a crime is where a crime is committed in our city and action is being taken to resolve that. But of course, it was an accident. But at what point do you support the officers? They are putting their life on the line. And it, it seems like a simple mistake. But these people were committing crimes, and they were stealing, and they were being reckless in our city, and they come from another city. So when do we harbor our own, you know, identity for safety?
For your call. And again, going back to what I said earlier, our officers, day in and day out, do an outstanding job, and they do exactly what we asked them to do to address this issue. And they were doing that up to the point where this, this incident turned into an officer-involved shooting. Um, we do need to support our officers. They have an awfully tough job, uh, particularly this past year. But at the same time, we have to hold ourselves accountable to the standards. Our Use of Force policies are very clear, and they're designed that way for a reason. So at the end of all this, we will measure the officer's performance in the lens of the Use of Force Report. We'll take into account all factors, and we will make the appropriate decision. But thank you for calling. Officers do need to be supported. Uh, this is a hard job, and they have to make split-second decisions. And for anybody who's listening in the audience, I'm not making excuses for officers during their job. But what I'm saying is when we do our jobs, the public expects us to do it right, particularly when we use a firearm. And we have to make sure that we use our firearms when we have to use it through the lens and the standards of our Use of Force Policy. And that's how ultimately this case will be measured. But I know our officers do a good job because I see the work day in and day out. And you're absolutely right. They do. And they were doing what we asked them to do in terms of addressing the car burglary problem in this city uh, when this incident happened.
We have one, another raised hand.
So once again, I would like to thank the chief again for his phenomenal broadcast today. I also would like to address a couple of other situations. So I am all for protect and serve. I do not, um, agree with anything that's going on um, far as criminal activity within our city. Let's get that straight. So my thing is, you know, from what I, my understanding is, um, officer is only supposed to discharge his firearm if his life is in danger. Now, if my son was already apprehended by his partner and another officer gun was accidentally discharged, how about if he would have shot his partner on accident? And, you know, I hear all these people coming on here, you know, regarding the officers, and the officers did what they're supposed to do. But if this was your child, you'll be saying the same thing as well. So here we are again. I'm totally with protect and serve, okay? Because I'm an honest person of the community, and I do not agree with anything that's going on far as, you know, crimes and everything be committed. I do not tolerate it. I, I, I do not indulge in it or anything of that nature. But at the same time, you have to remember this 23-year-old child that was shot is someone's child, and it's a very sensitive situation. So when y'all coming on here glorifying these cops that discharged their firearm accidentally, I feel some type of way about that. I hold no malice. I hold no grudge. Shit happens in the world. But for you guys to glorify a police for shooting a young African-American child in these time and days when this is going on normally, it's not okay.
Okay, we have another raised hand.
Yeah, I agree. I understand the sensitive, sensitive subject of the matter. But at the same time, these are the people that keep us safe. If people are committing crimes and they're being reported, and there's numerous events of illegal activity, then something needs to happen. And, and it's unfortunate that what happened, happened. You know? But it's, we, the streets need to be safe, and it's not safe with the stuff that's going on. So you need to keep that in mind when we go through these issues. It's about accountability.
There are no more raised hands at this time.
At this time, at this time, we have no hands raised. I will read, read the instructions. To call in, please call 1-669-900-6833. Enter meeting code 848-4423-3181. Enter passcode 773-772. Have no additional callers. We will end the broadcast in one minute.
We have a raised hand.
Hi, Chief Scott. Um, as you said multiple times, this shooting should not have occurred. So regardless of whether this was an accident or the result of criminal negligence, it seems that this will likely result in the payout of a significant settlement by the city to the victim. Uh, do you support taking these legal payouts out of the SFPD budget? Or do you believe that violent misconduct settlements are simply the cost of doing business? Thank you.
For your call. Um, the city, it comes out of the city's budget, the general fund, and definitely, uh, that, that, as you mentioned, if this case goes i- in that direction, it comes out of the city's budget. Uh, it impacts the city's availability of funding, and there, those cases are settled, uh, in case, uh, in court and by a legal process. So we don't know what's going to happen on this case, but I can just say to your question, as best as I can answer it, it comes out of the city's budget, and, you know, it impacts our availability of funds, and that includes the police department. So thank you for your call.
At this time, we have no hands raised. If we do not receive any calls in one minute, we will end the broadcast. Broadcast. At this time, we will conclude the broadcast as there are no more queues, callers in the queue. Thank you.